Okay. Good evening. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the August 30th, 2021 Special Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolkt12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Board members and staff are present in the boardroom. There will be no citizen participation scheduled for this evening. I would remind all of us to silence our cell phones and other devices around that the microphones may pick up. Also, we should silence each silenced microphone when you're not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda. So moved by Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Comments, corrections? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, we will move on to a discussion slash action item subject to a state board's proposal, proposed emergency regulation and system reopening plans. I'm opening up to the board. Who would like to start? Ms. Pataglia? Thank you.
Okay, can everybody hear me now? Okay. This has been a very trying time and very difficult for the entire community. I think one thing we all can agree on is everyone has an opinion regarding what is happening. No one is saying one opinion is right over another and no one is saying one opinion's wrong over another. Everyone feels different regarding this situation. This isn't easy. This isn't gonna be easy on anybody. But one thing I guaranteed a long time ago is I was gonna fight no matter what I felt was right or wrong, it needed to be what was good for students and for our community and our staff and our teachers. So we are going to continue discussing what's going on. I think one thing we definitely need to make sure is that the public understands that bullying, harassment, violence of any manner will not be tolerated. There has been some accusations made about protesting at Board of Ed members' homes. That is completely and utterly inappropriate. Those are our private homes. That is my private time with my family as well as the rest of the board.
You're out of order, sir. Please remove him. Thank you.
We're not gonna comply. You guys gotta do what's right. Do what's right for the community, do what's right for the kids. We're not gonna put up with it.
Go ahead.
Nope, that's all right. I'll finish up.
Anything else? Okay, Dr. Dorsey.
Thanks, Mrs. Herbert.
Sure.
And again, as we see and as we hear, it certainly gets to be an emotional topic. And again, we know that everyone is concerned about educating our children. And I too, I really want what's best for our kids. And I know that there are opposing views on what's best as far as masks and without masks are concerned. But I think the only way at this time, since we want all of our kids or as many of our kids in school as possible, I really do see the benefit of saying, okay, let's look at the proposed regulation. And I know there's a whole process for going before the Administrative and Executive Legislative Review Committee with some concerns or with some other considerations that we might want to have. But at this point, you know, I guess the bottom line for me is that I really do understand that we are agents of the state. I understand the structure of the state and being an agent of the state. When the state sets requirements, and again, these are proposed regulations at this time, but once the state really sets the requirements, you know, we really do, they don't ask us, do you agree with them or do you like them? But we really are needed to comply. So again, with saying that, again, like I said, I understand being an agent of the state. I also understand the value of local control. And I know our associations have really pushed local control and that's what we all want. But I think at this time, when you get to the point where the state is coming in and sort of usurping what we might have, or at least proposing to do that at this point, I think we can certainly express our displeasure and just see if there are some ways that we can still get something that we might want from this proposed legislation. For example, this is, as it's proposed, it's for 180 days. Maybe if there's a way that we can look at it more frequently or if we can ask if, you know, we get to certain levels, whether we can make a local decision at that point about, you know, doing what we feel is best for our community or not. I think that would be a wise step to take as far as going before the AELR Committee with some of those suggestions to get local autonomy back. And again, we certainly do have to look at our numbers. I had said I want everybody or as many of our kids to be in school as possible. I know we were not able to offer a virtual platform for our students this year. And that's always concerned me that we haven't given our parents and our students that option. And since we have sort of taken that option away from them, it's almost like I can see the value of moving forward with the proposed regulations as set forth by the state. I know last year we had a lot of ups and downs and a lot of inconsistencies. It seemed like it's as soon as we would have our meetings and come up with our proposals, within a day or two, we'd be hearing from the state or from others. And again, it's like our proposals could have changed. For example, I think of the graduations that, you know, we went ahead and we scheduled the best we could in the schools with the format that we used. And, you know, shortly after we had made that decision, well, it came out that, you know, you could really hold your graduations outside. So again, you know, we don't always get information in time for us to really make any changes. I know, as I was saying, that we did a lot of flipping last year. And I know how hard that can be for a school setting. Consistency is just, it's very important. So in one sense, I think too, it's easier to go from being more restrictive to being less restrictive rather than vice versa. And Dr. Lockhart, I know you had our staff members report back to duty starting today. And I know it would be better for them if they knew, again, what it is that we are going to require of them. And again, I just don't wanna see a year where we're going to have a lot of inconsistencies. I think that we need consistency from day one instead of flip-flopping. And I would think, you know, if we do err, like I said, you know, there are pros and cons of the masks and the non-masks. But I think if I would want to err, I'd want to err on the side of caution. I know there are certainly some exemptions that are outlined in the proposal so that not everyone would have to be masked if they would meet one of those exemptions as we have outlined in the proposal. So again, I can just see that we could have more students in school if we would say, let's go ahead and let's follow the proposal. Let's see if we can get before the board to take a look at giving back some local control, at least as far as reviewing our numbers and our data after 30 days on a regular basis. And I guess the bottom line is, I really don't want a power struggle. I don't wanna be in a power struggle with the state. I understand that whole structure there. I've heard people say that it's inevitable that we are going to have some cases, some outbreaks, and, you know, I think that will be true unfortunately, whether we're masked or not. But again, at this point, I see the value of starting our year as proposed by these proposed regulations as we have them outlined here. Again, the timing certainly isn't good. I mean, it's just too bad that, you know, we couldn't have turned back the clock and had the State Board share these proposals earlier and get that 10-day time period in there for the AELR to meet so we know, starting on day one, what we're going to be doing. Because again, I just know it's important to have the consistency. So in a nutshell, again, I'm for getting all of our children into schools. I'm certainly concerned about the safety of everyone. And, you know, when we talk about the strengths that we bring to the table, as it's been said, none of us are really the health professionals. You know, we can't really be called as expert witnesses on anything related to health. So I would certainly follow the requirements, the regulations as they're laid out, knowing that again, we are concerned about the safety of our students and having them in to learn. So for now, I'll just let those be my few opening comments. And again, I'll certainly, you know, share more information as we have further discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Mr. Kyler? I'm gonna let Donna go last since she's...
Okay. And as Ms. Pataglia said, this is a very emotional issue for all parties. I'm glad to see people here tonight. One of the things that, well, let me back up a second. I'm very proud to serve on this board with the people I serve with in Carroll County and the superintendent we have. I've seen other boards limit public coming. I've seen other boards limit public comment. And while some of the comment bashes me pretty good, they deserve the right to do it. And so I appreciate you guys being here, being respectful. This is a very emotional issue. MSD on August 26 approved this proposed regulation. It needs to be reviewed by AELR. They tried to force it through. We're very fortunate that our local delegate, Haveri Shoemaker, asked for a hearing, or they would have already voted. We've got to go to the hearing. We've got to speak our minds. And it probably will be virtual. And I'm not sure of how you sign up or what you do yet, but as anybody finds that out, it'll be public. We've got to try to get some compromises. We've spent... Well, yeah, we've spent some time trying to review the legality of this. And like it or not, they have the right to do this. I think it's totally out of character for the board, and hopefully it's not the new board to override local control. I don't think that's their intent, and I don't think they have the time to do it, but they did it because the part of the science they follow, I guess they felt was good. But it is, it's government overreach at the worst, and Board of Eds need to do local control. Again, I said I'm proud of being on this board. Last year, I think, thanks to the superintendent, central office, a bunch of employees, both educators and behind the scenes, we might have had the best year in the state of Maryland. Now, unfortunately, you can go 10 miles from here and into Pennsylvania and see schools that kicked our ass and did it successfully. We did it, in my opinion, successfully. We did it safely. And numbers were way higher than they were now. And I'm not sure, well, I am sure, I don't think mask... The community transmits to the schools, the students, the eleven and unders, they don't transmit to the community, and that's pretty much proven. You can find science that backs any side you want to back. But legally, they can put this in, they can enforce it, they can remove board members, they can take some of our money. And so we have to look at it seriously. But I think we all agree that local control is what it should be, so we need to fight for everything we can do. Back in June, and I don't know why, some of the papers and some of the public think in August we voted on something, but we didn't. Back in June, we decided masks were optional. And we said back then, the president before then said, we're gonna open September 8th, we're gonna open five days a week, and we're gonna open masks optional. We've been upfront, we've been open about it. The timing of this is tough. Now, I feel for many, we staff put together a virtual plan that didn't kill our teachers, and very few wanted it. So that's gone away. And if more would have wanted it, it would still be an option, but it just wasn't feasible to do it. Other schools are successful with mask optional. I'm convinced we could have been. I sincerely wonder if one of the concerns of many people isn't that we were successful last year, even though we were criticized and laughed at on a local level and a state level. We made it work, and I think we could have made this work. I wish we'd get the opportunity to prove that we could, but it looks like we may not. But I think moving forward, we need to be as fair as we can to all the students and all the families. We also need to be fair to the educators. We can't jump back to them teaching two different ways and everything we went through last year. Hopefully, we've learned about education in a year, and we've learned about COVID. And I think moving forward, we need to keep making the tough decisions. I think we did it. And we need to be as consistent as possible. But I also think we need to minimize what we can do with anything but our plan that masks were optional. I think, like it or not, the mask mandate's gonna be upheld. I think it'd be up, I personally think it may be upheld even if there are lawsuits, but we may have to do it. But I think we need to all work together, minimize the time period. They did put in some good rules for when you could not wear the mask in school, which was smart. And I think, I think at the hearing, we need to ask to not approve it. I think if you look at the committee, that's probably not gonna happen. So then we need to ask for, can you modify this? Can you modify that? I've been assured that the MSD has every intention of evaluating this on a monthly basis, looking at the numbers. The only thing, not the only thing, one of the things I'm not comfortable with when I say, well, we're gonna do that county by county, then it gets a little bit more, less sure. But we need to do it county by county. Now, right now, we're not the best county in the state. We were. And I think we will be back to where our COVID numbers are the best in the state. And I think we've got to fight hard that we get back to yellow or blue, this goes away. And I think tonight, I think we're gonna talk about when it starts because technically we've still, our last vote was to say masks were optional. But again, right or wrong, I feel, we don't have a choice of yes or no, but we have a choice of how we're gonna fight it and what we're gonna do about it. And again, thank you, everybody. And again, I wanna thank the board. I hope people see, we're very diverse. I think we like each other, and we get along, and we work together. But when we talk about some of this stuff, we disagree and we fight. But again, I've been on a lot of boards in my life, and this is the one that, when we're done tonight, whatever we come up with, it'll be the board's decision, and we'll move forward the best we can. And I apologize if that's, there's gonna be people in here not pleased, but I still think we have the best school system in the state. That's why I'm sitting here. And I think we need to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Devaunche, do you have any words to say? Okay. Ms. Savigny, I'm gonna say something first, and then I'll let you finish up, okay? Since we're all up here. Okay, this has been a very difficult 18 months. People have been very disrespectful, mean-spirited, and it has been very trying and emotional times. I would like to explain to you all what a qualified board we have here in front of you. We have been called unbelievable names, and I just want to remind each one of you here sitting, and I want to thank you all for being here, of what this board is made of. Dr. Pat Dorsey, to my right, has a EDD of Education. 10 years in the classroom, 29 years as an administrator, and very active in her community and church. Ms. Tyra Pataglia is a mom, an essential worker in agriculture, and she is working to get a degree in teaching, and I hope she gets a job in Carroll County. To my left, I have Mr. Kyler. Mr. Kyler graduated from Washington College with a BA in mathematics. He also attended Western Maryland College and received his teaching certificate. And now he is the Executive Vice President of Stewart &amp; Tate. Ms. Savigny, on our mirror there, she is a graduate of Penn State and very proud of it. She graduated with a mathematics degree and a credentialed actuary. She has been working in this field over 28 years and is a Vice President in the Berkshire Hathaway Organization. I graduated from Frostburg State. I went to Western Maryland. I got my master's equivalency in administration. I taught over 40 years in this county. I am proud to be a farmer, but I am more than a farmer. I've done a lot other things. And I also own Country Hill Horse Farm since 1978, and I have been teaching little girls and little guys and 65-year-old men and women how to ride and enjoy life. We all are different up here, but at the end, we all come together. Through this pandemic, I want you to all remind you, we were first in the state. We were out the blocks. We got schools open. And I cannot thank Dr. Lockhart, his team, and all of the employees in this Carroll County Public School System. And we got it right. Did you hear that? We got it right. We got our students back in school. And I thank you. We need to open schools, we need to be positive and put our best foot forward. I am proud to be a member of this board. I am proud to have this time with my colleagues. Unless there is a new motion tonight, masks will be optional. Ms. Savigny.
Thank you, Mrs. Herbert. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So I do have, I wanna apologize for not being there in person tonight. I didn't realize this meeting was going to be happening, and I am actually out of town. So thank you for allowing me to join virtually. Just wanted to make a bit of a statement. I know emotions are running high on all sides right now, and this has been a very challenging time for our entire community. I'm also very proud to be on this board, and I think that we have deliberated thoughtfully on all the issues throughout this pandemic. While it's generally accepted that the State Board has the legal authority to act as they did last week, one has to strongly question if they should have taken that action. Governor Hogan has stated repeatedly and quite recently on national television that decisions regarding COVID need to be handled at the local level. For the State Board to go against Governor Hogan's wishes and recommendations is questionable at best. I would also acknowledge, as this local board has previously mentioned, that if the state of Maryland were in a state of emergency and the governor had issued a mask mandate, this would not be an issue at all. Just as we did previously, we would comply with the governor's mandate under a declared statewide emergency. The conversation that I think we are having here today is substantially different. The Maryland State Board, while having the legal authority to act, should have shown the wisdom to pursue other avenues and partner with the counties rather than use a blunt-force instrument and one-size-fits-all approach without taking the time to understand any of the local decisions, conditions, or strategies. I will state clearly and for the record that it's my intention to have CCPS comply with all regulations once they are enacted into law. I will also state that I plan to urge this board to pursue any and all remedies to push back on what I strongly believe is gross overreach of power that is nothing short of bullying a small community. I strongly believe that fighting against injustice is our civic responsibility, and I certainly plan to do that. With that said, I am hopeful that when the AELR meeting occurs, that voting members will agree that this was an unnecessary abuse of power and that these decisions are best left to locally elected officials. I wonder if State Board members are aware that Carroll County Schools installed thousands of HEPA-filter air purifier units. We engaged mechanical engineers to ensure that we were buying quality units that meet specifications for the size spaces we were placing them. We've installed these in 100% of our classroom-sized spaces where instruction is occurring. Let me say that again. 100% of our classroom-sized spaces have these units installed to protect our students and staff. We think this is a better and more effective solution using tested technology rather than cloth masks. Additionally, Carroll County vaccination rates are some of the highest in the entire state. Carroll transmission rates remain as some of the lowest in the state. And thanks to our decisions, planning, and the Herculean efforts of CCPS educators and staff last year, we had the most successful in-person year of instruction in the state, and we did it safely. Carroll County Public Schools went through an entire summer of robust recovery learning without masks to help our students recover from the devastating impact that virtual learning had on so many of our students. We did this without significant incident, without reference to the ever-changing CDC guidance, and without the burden of a universal mask mandate. I question why, all of a sudden, the State Board had to call an emergency meeting when Carroll County has been providing in-person instruction in our classrooms without masks all summer. I ask, where is the emergency since the state of emergency has been lifted by Governor Hogan? Hogan? I want to be very clear to my fellow board members, staff, parents, and students that I care deeply about safety. But in life, everything we do comes with risk, and you are forced to take risks every day just to function and live your life. For example, we send our children on school buses each and every day, and there is a risk that that bus can get into an accident and injure some students. But we knowingly take that risk because we believe that the benefits outweigh the risks. I view the conversation about wearing a mask or not wearing a mask in the exact same way. There is significant scientific data and evidence that demonstrably shows that wearing a mask can present serious medical, social, learning, and developmental problems in children. This is where I believe the state board failed to do their due diligence during the discussions prior to taking their vote last week. When asked if wearing masks presents any problems for students, their answer was no. I'm sorry, but that is scientifically an incorrect answer. This is where I strongly disagree with the state board. Forcing a child, a child to wear a mask for seven hours a day is brutal for many students. It impacts breathing. It impacts learning. It impacts social development. It impacts so many things in negative ways, and it's not getting the attention it deserves. I believe that the science and data published by the NIH that shows the negative pediatric impact on our students is real, and it outweighs the potential benefits that a cloth mask may offer in slowing the spread of COVID. That's the core point in this entire discussion as far as I'm concerned. I want to be clear on this. If I believed that there was no downside risk to wearing a mask, I would absolutely have no problem instituting a mask requirement. However, the reality is that masks present a real health and educational problem. Just being in person for our students isn't enough. We need our students to be in a position to effectively learn. I believe all of the negative effects of children wearing masks far outweighs the benefits that a cloth mask might provide in COVID protection. One has to ask a simple question. If masks are so effective, why did Frederick County experience so many COVID cases, and why do they have more than 600 students already in quarantine? Where is the evidence that clearly demonstrates masks somehow slowed the spread? I've heard some say that it would be worse if masks weren't being used, but where's the evidence of that? While I concede that it's possible some cases or quarantines might have been prevented, how many is completely unknown. And then I go back to the opportunity cost. They are forcing students to wear masks, which impacts many students in a negative way. And for what? An unmeasurable hypothesis of, it might be worse. I'm sorry, but that's not an evidence-based decision. I would like to ask all adults to try and put yourselves in the shoes of a six-year-old. This child is trying to learn a language and how to read. This child is trying to learn how to socially fit in and develop. This child is trying to just breathe normally. This child's glasses are fogged up all the time. This child cannot see or understand facial cues from their teacher. This child has mucus building up. And while dealing with all of this, we expect this child to focus, concentrate, and somehow learn. We are requiring this child to do so while wearing a mask for seven hours a day. Day after day after day. The burden is real. I wanted to just take a few minutes so that everyone knows exactly where I stand and why I take the position that I do. I am basing this on the soundest possible science I can find while also using the best judgment as an elected leader to meet the needs of all of our stakeholders and parents. I urge the AELR to take into account the fact that there can be significant negative health consequences to some kids when they are forced to wear a mask for seven hours a day. That's why these types of health decisions need to be left to parents. I urge the AELR. I urge the AELR to recognize that a one-size-fits-all approach is not sound policy and that there are real differences at the local level when it comes to how schools should operate. With all that being said, I would like to make a motion. One, that we implement the mask mandate only after it is officially approved by the AELR. Two, at the AELR hearing, we request an exception for Carroll County based on our existing layered strategies, conditions, and use of technology. Three, short of that, request a local flexibility in when to remove the mandate at the local level based on current and local conditions rather than a blanket 180 days. And four, work with parents of Carroll County students who were planning based on our vote of parental mask choice. When we decided not to have a virtual option, we worked with and provided accommodations to parents who were uncomfortable with that decision due to their child's circumstances. Now we need to provide an opt-out or accommodations for parents in the other direction due to the forced mask mandate by the state board. That's the end of my motion, but I would like later in this meeting to have a separate discussion to develop a better plan for handling quarantines, because the Frederick situation has showed us that a mask mandate simply does not work. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you all have a seat so we can go forward, please? Thank you.
I second.
Okay. Mr. Kyler, second the motion? And at this time, do we have any comments?
Yes, we do. Since we have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
I'd like to see if we can have a little more discussion here.
Sure.
You know, I'm, I'm questioning, I heard about summer recovery, students not wearing masks. Well, masks were certainly optional, because I certainly visited some classrooms.
I'm sorry, Dr. Dorsey, could I, could I ask? I can't, I, suddenly I lost the ability to hear the, the speakers.
Hold on, Donna.
Okay, thank you.
Could you hear me?
I, I can hear you now.
Okay. All right. Dr. Dorsey, see if she can hear you.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. When you were making your comments and sharing about masks during summer recovery, well, again, masks were certainly optional, because certainly there were some students there in masks. And I am questioning what our positivity rate is at this time in the county. And I'm also questioning our special ed students and our students with compromised health conditions and other health factors. So I mean, those are a few of the comments that I'd like to get on the table right now. The positivity rate for the county, what are we thinking or planning for our special ed students and students who have health conditions and health factors that really are a concern to those parents? Because as we've said, you know, we certainly don't have a virtual option. I mean, I like it when people have a choice, a fair choice, but at this point, we don't have a fair choice to offer our parents. I mean, we're basically saying six hours of home-hospital instruction if we can get approval for that. So those are just a couple of comments right now that I would like to have addressed.
And Dr. Dorsey, I'd, I'd like to hear a discussion of those as well. I think when we decided not to have a virtual option, it was because there was very little interest in it, right? Obviously, the, the situation has changed, and we, we tried to make accommodations for the, the parents and students who, who needed the virtual option. But, and now, it's, it's a little bit too late in the game, as I understand it, that, you know, we, we simply don't have the time or the teachers to stand up a virtual option. But I do think that we need to address that now in, in terms of, you know, in kind of holistically talking about the situation with quarantines and what's going to happen with that as well.
Dr. Lockhart.
Sure. Well, do we, do we want to begin to address some of those things? I know we're in the middle of a, of a motion here. So as it relates to positivity rates, you know, this summer, the positivity rates were lower, right? They were as low as I think they've been. And then started to, to move back up throughout the month of August. So we, we did have different, we do have different positivity rates from when we had the summer recovery program.
Do you know what we are at now?
I'm going to look to Carl. I, I thought it was 5.9 today. I don't want to be quoted on that, but last I checked, I think it was in that range.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Shokni, as it relates to special education programming and what our plans are, what, so what we've been planning all, all summer as we're getting ready to, to head into this school year in terms of supporting our special education students with the, with the plans that we had coming into this fall.
Good evening, board members. I can answer specific questions, but obviously, we're working with families to make sure that we're offering a free and appropriate public education or FAB to our students with disabilities. Some of our students have, have applied for home and hospital instruction if there is a medical need there. And when that happens, the IEP team will convene to determine what services those students require in that setting. Otherwise, we're looking to implement IEPs as they are written for our students who are
Thank you for that information. Any other comments for Mr. Shokni?
So the one, oh, so for students with the, the health factors, I mean, I, I know Mr. Shokni just addressed it as far as special ed students are concerned, but how about other students who are immunocompromised or have other health factors that they're dealing with?
So I'm going to ask Mr. Streeker, whoever sees the home-hospital process, to speak We have multiple students who have applied, families that have applied for home and hospital instruction. We're at the board's direction, I believe it was the August meeting, you discussed being, you know, liberal in, in permitting that. The biggest challenge we're having right now is finding teachers to provide those services. We are struggling to find staff who are able to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Streeker. Any, any other questions for Mr. Streeker? Thank you, Mr. Streeker. Ms. Bataglia?
So I mean, I, I agree with everything that Donna has said. Again, like I said in the beginning, no matter what side you're on regarding mask or for masks or no masks, my biggest issue is about local control. And one of the biggest things I'm concerned with is what is next? And we, you know, we have had, you know, last year, many of our teachers, they went and they got vaccinated because we asked them to. Many of our staff did. And they went and did it. And then they were told, oh, you got to put your mask back on. And we're also hearing, you know, many of the hospitals and the doctors' offices, you know, they're, they're starting to require our nurses and everybody to get vaccinated. And the problem is, we're already having a problem where we're being told there's, hospitals are being at capacity, but they're going to start firing nurses. And that doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. We're going to fire nurses if we're at capacity because they won't get vaccinated. And my biggest fear is, you know, if this is what the state board is going to do, is try to implement a mask mandate, who's to say that they would not implement a vaccine mandate on our teachers and our staff or our kids or whatever other mandate they feel like putting in place? And that worries me. Because it takes away everything from the local level. It takes away parents' rights. Takes away our rights to decide what is right for our children and what's not for our children. So I do have a very difficult time with basically just taking it and not fighting back. So I, I am going to absolutely agree and vote as far as we hold off until, basically, the state cuffs my hands and makes me do it.
Thank you.
And we'll still fight them.
Mr. Kyler.
And, and I, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said tonight. I think I'd like to amend a motion. Number one, I think we should say, what, what time period after this is put into law? When this proposed regulation is a regulation, what's reasonable? That in 24 hours in two working days, what's reasonable? I think we need to tell parents and staff exactly what to prepare for. So I'd, I'd ask you before I amend, what's reasonable?
Well, I think it's, once it goes into law, I don't think I have a choice.
So the next day.
With implementing, right. And I'll, I'll let you make your amendment, and then I'd like to add a couple of comments.
Okay. And then, and then I want the amendment to have two parts. And I think this should be in our school facilities that house programs for students. I don't think other employees are requiring masks. I don't feel like the maintenance people in a non-school building. I don't feel like dining services people in non-school buildings. I don't feel like central office should wear a mask. And I, and I know you guys are being stuck with this probably, and I don't know if you're sympathetic for others, but my part is, similar to what Ms. Savigny said, at this point in time, if we haven't learned anything, I think we've learned that probably nobody should be wearing cloth masks. So I'll, I'll make the amend, amendment, and everybody can discuss. But the amendment would be, once this is approved as a law, and I, and I honestly don't know if that's a day after, you know, if they do it, it's immediately takes effect or it's a period, but, but you were saying, the next working day after this is approved in the law, we will follow the law, and it will only be for Carroll County Public School Facilities that house programs for students.
Do I have a second?
I, I will second that, Kenny. So if we make the, the statement that we will implement the mask mandate only after it is officially approved by the AELR, do we say we anticipate that to be September 15th?
Yes.
And we'll notify folks as soon as we know what that exact date is?
Yes. That sounds.
Is that a reasonable way to say?
Yes, I think so, Donna. That's very, very reasonably stated. And then the second part that, Kenny, would you like to restate that about the school?
Only for Carroll County Public School Buildings that house programs for students.
Okay, we have a second on that.
If I can provide a clarification, the problem with the amendment with respect to school facilities after passage by AELR is this. If the proposed emergency regulation as written gets adopted by AELR, that includes school facilities other than school buildings as well. Your, yeah. So if your amendment was for a period of time prior to passage by AELR, that would be within the board's prerogative. But what you're proposing, however, is something that potentially would run contrary to what the state board has adopted and which is now before AELR. That would be an appropriate thing to bring to AELR's attention and ask that, that committee modify. But the amendment as proposed potentially would run contrary to the regulation, which would be illegal.
So you're saying we're not allowed to even propose that?
I'm, I'm not saying that you're not allowed to propose it. I am saying that what you proposed with an effective date of after.
Yes.
AELR's adoption is asking the board to adopt a policy that would be contrary to the regulation that is now before the committee.
Yeah, I understood that. If I can't, I can't. If I can, I understood that.
Yeah. And, and so, in essence, as we've all discussed, or as all you all have discussed this evening, recognizing that the state board has the authority to pass a regulation, and the regulations, once adopted by AELR, have the full force and effect of law, you can't act contrary to the regulation.
Okay.
So Robert Scholz of Orders, does he then amend his amendments, and it was second, or we take that all?
Can she withdraw her second, and we, we may withdraw it and just make a new one?
Yes.
Okay. So we are going to withdraw that.
You second.
Amen. We're going to.
Ms. Savigny, you willing to withdraw your second?
I, I withdraw my second as well.
Thank you.
And I withdraw the motion.
And now, Mr. Kyler, you may make a new motion. Thank you very much.
And so, we're saying that, and, and her motion, what, do you have her motion written?
To implement the optional mask mandate. Number two was request. Number two was request, Donna, what was number two?
Okay, so the first one would be, we implement the mask mandate only after it is officially approved by the AELR.
Right, okay.
The second one was, at the AELR hearing, we request an exception for Carroll County based on our existing layered strategies, conditions, and use of technology. Number three, short of that, request local flexibility in when to remove the mandate at the local level based on current and local conditions rather than a blanket 180 days. And then, number four, work with parents of Carroll County students who are planning based on our vote of parental mask choice for accommodations.
Okay, so, so my amendment would be, in our first part, that we would implement it with 24, within 24 hours of it, well, the next day, the next day of it being made into law. And then I would like to add that at the hearing, we're also gonna request that this only apply to buildings that house programs for students.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All right. Now we can have a discussion on that.
Sorry I pushed the-
That's okay.
I push the bubble sometimes.
Stop it. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you, board members. I, I certainly appreciate all the varied opinions and, and all of our board members' perspective. I am not a voting member of the Board of Education, but I am the superintendent and want to offer my perspective for your consideration, again, with certainly respect and understanding from all the different components of this. But I come from a safety, operational, and consistency perspective, and would ask the board to, would ask the board, as they consider the motion that's on the floor, considering masks for the first day of school, and, and here's why. We're essentially looking at five days, five school days, between the first day of school and the AELR hearing for consistency, safety, and less quarantines. And I, I appreciate the, the comments made by Ms. Savigny, because we, we truly don't really know how many quarantines we're going to have. I do know, in speaking with the superintendent in Frederick, the, the quarantine circle was smaller because they were all in masks. So it would have been a number much greater than 600 that was reported. And I, my job is to keep as many students in school as possible, keeping them participating not only in our classrooms, but our extracurricular activities, athletics, all the events that go beyond. And for the five days before it likely becomes law, I'd hate to have to quarantine students unnecessarily. It's not my rule. We're required to follow it. You've seen the protocols. I wanted to share my perspective for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard.
Dr. Lockard.
Oops, Mr. Kyler?
You're, you're okay with the next day? That's, that's your exception? The rest-
In terms of-
The rest of her motion, you, you're comfortable with? It's the date?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Dorsey?
I think we have so many things on the floor, it seems like I'm-
So right now, we are, we-
I think that we're all on the same page.
Okay, Dick has an amendment on the floor right now. That's what we gotta talk about. The next, I mean, Dick. Kenny, I looked at Dick and Kenny has a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion on that one? Then I can call for the vote on the, on the motion, on the amendment, that we would put implementation, implementation the next working day after the, the meeting.
As well as request at the AELR hearing that the facilities be limited to, to facilities that children are in.
Yes, that house, that, that house programs for students.
That house, house student programs.
Yeah, yes.
So at this time, you're just voting on the amendment?
Yes, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes? Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm trying to understand the amendment. It's-
We're, we're gonna, the amendment states that we have to institute whatever the state says the following day.
That I'm fine with.
Okay. And then they are going to ask a request for an exception for Carroll County Public Schools for any, any facility that doesn't have a child in it, for them to also be, have the option of mask.
So really, the motion is something we have to do anyway, right?
We have to discuss Kenny's motion.
First, you have to approve the amendment.
Amendment.
And then we could vote on the amended motion.
So right now, I have four votes, yes, and Tyra?
We're voting on-
Kenny's amendment.
You're not voting on the main motion?
No, we're not voting on the main motion, we're voting on the amendment.
I, I don't like just narrowing it just to buildings that have students in it, because I still struggle with the fact that we had teachers and staff members get vaccinated, and now they're being told to mask, and I don't think that's fair. I mean, we even have students that have gotten vaccinated because they were told, you get vaccinated, you can take your mask off.
All right.
Can, can I, can I explain?
That's what bothers me.
Can I explain why I made it?
Okay, right now, we have a vote on the floor.
Okay.
For Tyra, yea, nay, abstain? It passes four, four to an abstention.
Well, and I, I opposed.
Oh, you opposed? Okay, so, Ms. Savigny, your vote?
I voted aye on the amendment.
Aye. We have three ayes, an abstention, and a nay. It passes.
No.
All right.
Can I say something about the whole motion?
Now you may go and talk, now we can go back and talk about the motion.
Yeah, and, and I, and I understand and respect your position on that. My, my reasoning for that, and I think Ms. Savigny's reasoning for her thing she wants to do, I think it's understood, our first step at the hearing is to have this overturned. Our second step at the hearing is to say, exclude Carroll County. So we want it all, but if we don't get it all, I want to ask for pieces. So that was the, I, I'm not putting that ahead of getting rid of the whole thing. And, and, but I understand what you're saying, and I feel, because, like I said, the families are bearing the brunt of this, but I, I just feel like, last year, the educators all stepped up and, and, and we, we were the best for the, for, because of them, and, and I want to treat them as fairly as I can. They, they shouldn't be in a building that doesn't house students, in my opinion, and, and still have to wear a mask. Other employees aren't, other employers aren't doing it, and they shouldn't be, but.
Yeah, that's the only thing I, I still struggle with, is the fact that, you know, a lot of people were sold on the ma, on the vaccines to remove their masks. So they went out and did it, they, you know, were sick for a couple of days, they took the chances, and now they're being told to mask up again. And I, that's the biggest piece that I struggle with. And I, you know, our, our teachers did a lot last year, we asked them to step up, and that is the one piece that I really struggle with, is those that have stepped up to get the vaccine, and they're still gonna be required to wear the mask. And I still, I just don't agree with that.
And, and I agree, and that's why this whole thing's so archaic.
Thank you. All right, now we're gonna get back to the main motion. Are there any more comments, questions?
Okay, I would like to thank Dr. Lockard for sharing his feedback. And again, I was along those same lines. I mean, when you're working with a school system and with schools, that consistency is just so very important. So, anyway, thank you for sharing, Dr. Lockard, and, and I, I concur with your, your comments.
Any other comments? Yes, Davanti?
I just would like to also concur with Dr. Dorsey and Dr. Lockard. The way that I and many other people look at vaccines and masks is, it's not only a personal choice, but it's a social responsibility that we undertake in order to make sure that our greater community is safe, not just us, but our greater community. And I would like to echo Dr. Dorsey and Dr. Lockard's words in saying that I feel that having masks in place for our students first day of school would be most beneficial for, one, continuity of learning, and, two, just the best benefit for a greater community in terms of safety and quarantining and everything.
Thank you, Davanti. And Dr. Lockard, I can't thank you enough for last year. You put us, we put you through struggles that you never dreamed of, and I want to thank you for your honesty and your caring of students in Carroll County. Are there any other comments? Mr. Weaver, do you have anything to say?
Well, this is definitely a lot of different opinions out there, and I think this is a matter of risk management. What are the risks, what are the benefits from this? We are, you know, independent in Carroll County. That's one of the traits Carroll County has had. Many of us were born here and inherit those traits, but, you know, I do caution a little bit along, about the long-range economic benefits from the state of Maryland on this. Wrong decisions here, and how we're handling. That could be detrimental to funding future amendments, correct, here. Doubt in Carroll County. As far, and I did ask the question, what about face shields, step man? That's not a problem.
Doc, Mr. Singer stated no one evening when I came in here during a public meeting, and I brought my, I have, I do have several face shields, and he said no. That does not, that-
Wouldn't work at all.
Yeah. Sure. Mr. Emili? It actually has specific-
It does.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Weaver, the proposed emergency regulation defines face covering as a material that covers the nose and mouth to prevent respiratory droplets from being expelled into the air, and that, A, is secured to the head, including with ties or ear loops, B, fits snugly but comfortably against the side of the face, and C, is either manufactured or homemade, and is a solid piece of material without slits, exhalation valves, or punctures. So that would seem to exclude face shields.
That answered my question.
But then again, that would be another item to address to the AELR.
Absolutely.
And I agree, I think that's something that we need to look at, because, I mean, teacher, that could be extremely beneficial to teachers.
And social distancing with this, without masks, that has to be achieved at this level, at six feet?
Dr. Lockard?
No. We, we'll, social distance to the extent possible, but the Maryland State Department's expectation is that all students are afforded the opportunity to return to school five days a week, and that makes that, right, right, yeah.
You know, the commissioners are responsible for the public safety-
Do you have your-
I can't hear you.
We-
The commissioners are responsible for the public safety of 168,000 people. And it is part of our responsibility, look for the benefit of, of the whole population here. And we sent a, I think, a letter stating that, you know, we have concerns about this, but, especially for the young, young kids. But this is a, and also, I think in that letter stated, this is a responsibility of the Board of Education. We don't have any say into this. This is totally your responsibility on this. We just wanted to at least respond to you, what we thought. And, you know, we're responsible for that whole population here in the county, not this 30,000 that you are, but the whole population. So we're encouraged that, you know, at least start this way, and then if the, it gets overturned or whatever, that's fine. If we can go that in the future, 10, 15 days, whatever it is, till the state board changes their mind or gives you a waiver, that would be, I think, appropriate. But the biggest issue I'm worried about is economic benefits, long range, from the state.
Okay. All right. I, I haven't said a whole lot, but I will tell you, I'm an old Carroll County girl. I was elected by you all out there, and I'm telling you, when we go to that hearing, we're not gonna lay down. We already are making plans, and as you can see, the, the ways we are going to hope to make comments and appear in front, we do not know actually how it's gonna be held, where it's gonna be held, probably virtual, but the evening that I contacted Haven Shoemaker, of course, he went and asked for the hearing right away. So we are not gonna take this lying down, and we do need accommodations. We are different in Carroll County, and that is not a bad thing. So we are for the students of Carroll County, we will make a very good decision here tonight, and we will go forward and put our best foot forward in that hearing, and ask for recommendations that need to be changed. So we are not, as a board, going to lie down and let this go away. We have to stick up for our students in Carroll County. Because I haven't said a whole lot, but I will tell you, we will do that. And we are getting organized as we attend this meeting tonight. And we have excellent people there in the back room that will help us get information together, and we will tap other people also. And I can't thank you all enough for being here tonight, caring, and we will go forward as Carroll County, whatever the outcome, but we're gonna fight. Ms. Savigny?
I was gonna-
Ms.-
Hey, Ms. Savigny's there.
It's been a tough two weeks, I'll tell you that.
Yeah. I, I did want to say thank you to Delicate Shoemaker, he did make a press release today, and, you know, with how he's gonna be, went ahead and looked at everything for the AELR committee, committee, and so I just want to thank Delicate Shoemaker for that-
Yes.
-today, that he sent out. And, you know, like I said, we just, we need to do what's best for our kids. I mean, public health has been wrong in the, in history. So, you know, I mean, let's just, we need to get our kids back in.
Davanti?
So as part of the motion, when we request the excuse for, at the AELR hearing for Carroll County, will that be on behalf of Carroll County Public Schools or the Carroll County Board of Education?
Same. There is no entity, there's no legal entity called the Carroll County Public Schools. It is a shorthand for the Board of Education of Carroll County, which is the legal body, politic, and corporate.
Okay, thank you for that.
Does anybody have any other comments before I call for a vote?
I would ask that you would restate the motion in its entirety, please.
All right. Ms. Savigny, you need to state your motion.
So I will try to get the wording as close as possible. We implement the mask mandate only after it is officially approved by the AELR. We anticipate that to be the next day, which would be September 15th. At the AELR hearing, we request an exception for Carroll County based on our existing layered strategies, conditions, and use of technology. Short of that, request local flexibility in when to remove the mandate at the local level based on current and local conditions rather than a blanket 180 days. We also request that the facilities impacted be changed to only facilities that house programs with students. And we work with the parents of Carroll County students who are planning, based on our vote of parental mask choice, to make reasonable accommodations.
And then we have the amendment by Mr. Kyler?
She included the amendment.
Okay. And I thank you for that. Anybo, any other comments, questions? Then I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It passes four to one. I have a, I need a motion for the adjournment. Are we still, do you still want to continue to discuss now?
Did you wanna-
Don it.
Did you want to talk more about the virtual option, or we kind of made that point, and Dr. Lockard and various people explained? Are you comfortable?
Folks made, you know, we did have some discussion. I think it behooves us to talk about the, the exact quarantine options that we have in place. I know that we've put a lot of things in place, and, Dr. Lockard, I know you were planning to talk about that in more detail at next week's regular monthly board meeting. Does it make sense to just have a couple of those comments tonight, so people understand where it currently stands?
Sure. I'm gonna ask Ms. McCabe to come to the podium. She's been helping work with the directors and the school principals. We do have a couple of layers to that process. I, I know that that has been a challenge for school systems across Maryland. And so, Ms. McCabe, if you'd speak to that, please.
So what we have planned right now is that for students-
So what we have planned right now is that for students who have to quarantine, they would be able to still access the learning management systems of their classroom teachers. So whether the teacher is one of the teachers using Schoology or a teacher using Google Classroom, the student in quarantine would still be able to access current learning resources that align with what is being taught in the classroom while the student is on quarantine. The student would also be able to turn work in and communicate with their teachers through those, through the LMS, the Learning Management System. In addition to that, we also plan to have Quarantine Success Coaches, one in each school building, and those, that, those staff will help to coordinate any extra help that students may need who are on quarantine. So if a student is in quarantine and struggling with a concept and struggling with the work and lessons that have been put up in the LMS, then the Quarantine Success Coach would be able to connect that student with a teacher who would be willing to tutor the student after school, and the teacher would get paid hourly to do so. In that way, we would help students who are struggling to not fall behind while they're in quarantine. The success coaches would also be able to talk with students and their families during the school day, coordinate other kinds of services for students in quarantine, like social emotional services that might be needed, and basically be that bridge back to the school building and people who are in person there.
Thank you so much for that information. Mr. Kyler has, I think, a question.
Now, students or families already are opting for home and hospital, which also the goal is to get them back in the classroom as soon as possible. But in this case, for the period of time of a quarantine, this is way more efficient than that would be, correct?
Correct. Yes. For students who are in quarantine, they should not be quarantined for long periods of time. So our goal is just to keep them, to keep them up with what's going on in the classroom, with the lessons that are being taught, the content that's being taught, and for them to continue to work on any work or take any tests or quizzes that they need to so that they're not missing, missing that time and not being able to keep up with their classmates. That way, when they can come back to school, there's not a lot of work to be made up.
Okay, Dr. Lockard?
Just going to add too, none of us enjoyed the experience last year, but one of the silver linings was all of our teachers became very proficient, and so did our students with navigating that learning management system, being able to get to the resources, being able to communicate. So it's not like we're starting over necessarily with that process this year. It's pretty familiar to everybody.
And Ms. McCabe, when do you think you and Dr. Lockard will get an email out to parents, teachers, principals?
About quarantine services?
About what has gone on here tonight, and then masking will still remain optional.
Right. We will, we will most likely be able to get a communication out tomorrow.
Right, as it relates to the, and I see your card down there. As it relates to, as it relates to the board's decision of tonight, Ms. Gaddis will be working on that this evening and into the morning. That communication will go out tomorrow. I know you've already worked with principals. Principals are beginning to communicate that quarantine process.
Right.
At their buildings.
Right. So principals have been communicating what that quarantine process will look like with their staff, which has just come back to work this week. So the teachers have come back this week. So we wanted that process to be thoroughly explained and understood by staff before we sent anything out to the community, but we will be able to send information out quickly this week about quarantine procedures and learning during quarantine.
And I want to thank you and Dr. Lockard and the staff back there, because I know you all have been diligently working, trying to prepare, and we, I know we put you in limbo a little bit, but now you all can go forward, and I thank you for all your hard work for your whole, your whole team, because we've got to do this together. And we made it through last year with flying colors, because we were number one. Devaunchee?
So for the two options for learning management system that we have, Schoology and Google Classroom, I know that teachers have the option this year to choose between the two, which they want to use in the classroom. And the concern that I've heard from many students is the consistency between them, particularly the crossing over between the two platforms between classes, because in last year, we mainly used Google Classroom, so students are very familiar with Google Classroom now. So I'm a bit concerned about why we need to put this new sort of application on them when they're already familiar with this beforehand.
I guess since Ms. McCabe left, this is my question.
Tag your it.
Yeah, no doubt. She didn't even tag me. So here's what's going on. This has been, Schoology has been in the plan for over two years now, and when we went into the pandemic, unfortunately, back in the spring of '20, we had to stand up a way to provide information to students and families and have our teachers have an opportunity to work with kids. So Google Classroom was the solution at that time, because we certainly couldn't build the capacity of our teachers. The level of sophistication with Schoology far exceeds Google Classroom. Google Classroom is a great way of purveying content. Schoology is a great way of communicating professional, developing capacity of teachers, doing grade pass backs, getting all of those pieces working within our actual whole kind of, you know, network or paradigm that we have right now for instructional technology. You're right. So last year, we had 22 teachers take part in a field study, high school teachers, where we gathered their insights on how to best use Schoology. We met with them on a weekly basis and heard the good, the bad, the ugly. We made modifications and revisions. Then this year, we decided that those content areas that the teachers were field testing would be the content areas where we started to implement Schoology. Once again, we made that investment years ago. And so what we felt comfortable in doing right now is we weren't going to take things away from folks, to your point, Devaunchee, about being familiar with Google Classroom, but at the same time, we wanted to continue to go ahead and make sure that we invested in our investment. And so we wanted to get kids' college, career, community ready, and we do know, as folks are looking to either whatever they choose to do after CCPS, a true learning management system will probably be very much part of their world. So that was the purpose.
So is it currently being implemented at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high?
It is not. It's only being, it was field tested at high school with the 22 teachers in multiple content areas, and it's only being used at the high school level right now, in addition to some of our eighth grade teams in a number of middle schools. We have our middle school teachers that are very eager to get this on board, so, but I've, we've actually said, "Slow down a little bit," because I've had a board member say, "Jason, you're doing great, but slow down a little bit."
Yeah.
So we are. And that's why we're slowing, that's why we're slowing it down a little bit.
Yeah, and I know it's a bit more difficult for the younger kids to get on hand with something new, so.
Quite, yeah, and quite honestly, the families. I mean, the families are the ones that are working with the littlest ones, and they start to become familiar with Google Classroom. We're not going to pull that away from them.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, because I did make that statement, we got to slow down, because not every year, we're teaching in a pandemic, I hope. Mr. Kyler?
First off, and I had another comment. Great question. Are you concerned about any training for the high school kids or how they transition into this, or are you pretty comfortable?
From the students who have done this in the pilot, they are pretty familiar with it. The students that aren't at the high school level, a lot of the media literacy like comes very quickly. So even if there's maybe one or two weeks at the beginning of the year where they become more familiar with it, it's very easy for them to pick up on it.
Okay, great. My other comment, I think the board and the president, prior to tonight's meeting, talked about the board putting out a statement from the president, and originally that would probably gone out ahead of the notice that Dr. Lockard, everybody's doing, but I think because of tonight's meeting, their message should be first and the quickest. But I still think if other board members are comfortable with it, I think it would be nice if our president would put out a letter, because not everybody watches these meetings. Not everybody even follows up and sees what happens. So I think a letter coming from the president of the board summarizing tonight would be good. Does everybody agree with that, or am I just making more work for?
I think you made your point very well known, and if the public didn't hear you, I'm sure they'll hear you up on the Hill.
I think they heard me.
I don't think you need to send out a statement, Ms. Herbert, now.
I just think a lot of people don't see this.
Well, they'll read it in the paper, they'll see it on the news, or they'll plaster it all over social media, name calls again. I mean, that's what they do.
Social media is a percentage. The Carroll County Times used to be 33. I think it's about 18.
No. I don't think.
It's up to you guys.
I don't think Ms. Herbert needs to.
I think there would be some benefit to that, but obviously, that would require the additional work from Mrs. Herbert, and we'd have to all agree through legal that, you know, that we're comfortable with that level, with that letter that would go out.
I'm fine. I'll do anything you want me to do. Dr. Pat?
I'm fine with you not writing a letter.
Not writing a letter? Okay. I think everybody understood where I stood tonight. Okay, Donna?
Okay.
All right. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions?
Ms. Herbert, I just have one additional question.
Sure.
Is Ms. McCabe still in the room?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Come on down.
Thanks. Sorry, Cindy, I can't see you, but.
She's coming. She is coming.
I wanted to thank you for the individual, the extra quarantine coach information that you gave us tonight. And I just wanted to ask what kind of capacity we think we have for those quarantine coaches? Like, how, when do they get maxed out? At like, what level of students is it? You know, 1% of our student population being quarantined, 2%? Do you have a feel for that?
We think they're going to be able to handle a pretty large load as far as quarantines go, because, you know, they're not actually providing the instruction and the tutoring for the most part. They're providing coordination in the school to help meet the students' needs. So we feel that even when we have many students in a school who are in quarantine, that coach will be able to coordinate and support as need be, and they can also bring in and utilize the help of the guidance counselors, academic facilitators, reading and math specialists, other professionals who are in the building can help support as well. We just wanted one person to be the main coordinator of that support.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McCabe.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments, questions? Again, I want to reiterate, I'm a Carroll County girl, and we are going to show up for that appeal or the hearing, and we're not going to take this line down. And I want to thank everyone in the back that has worked so hard, and Dr. Lockard, everyone over there. I hope all the teachers had a wonderful first day back. Hard to get back into the grind with the summer we've had. It's been so hot. But we will all get through this, and I want to thank everyone for all their input. But just try to be nice to each other, because I am telling you, you all have no idea how terribly we've been treated. Nasty. Nasty and mean. I just, and disrespectful. So, please, I want to thank you all.
All parents need to respect each other. No matter what a parent's decision is, you should not criticize what another parent's decision is. That is their family's choice, whether it's to vaccinate or not vaccinate, mask, unmask, whether to take your kid to the beach or not, or wherever. Just whatever a parent's choice is, just accept that parent's choice, as long as they're not actually harming their child physically, mentally. Just accept whatever's choices that each other make.
Thank you. At this time, I call for adjournment. I need a motion?
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, second by?
Second.
Holy.
I'd second.
And by Mr. Kyler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. And thank you, Donna, for coming.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye. No.
No?
No.